Recording is going.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. This is Dan McKernan, the Director at the Mass Division of Marine Fisheries, and welcome to tonight's public hearing. We have a number of items before us, mostly related to commercial quota utilization for some of our southern species. We also have three Marine Fisheries Advisory Commission members joining us tonight. I'll mention these because I've come to learn that the Zoom calls, the public isn't always able to see full participants. We have Chairman Ray Kane, Vice Chairman Mike Pirtanock, and Colleen Bogdan. From DMF, we have Jared Silver, Nicola Mazzurro, Story Reed, Anna Webb. And in addition, we have an intern named Rachel Bratton, who is working with us to study some of our trawl fisheries down in the Nantucket region as part of a project that she's working on. So, next slide, Jared. So tonight, we're going to take a public hearing and comment. This public hearing is authorized under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, as well as Mass General Law, Chapter 130, Sections 2, 17A, 80, and 104. And we're taking comment on amendments to the Code of Massachusetts Regulations at Chapters 6 and 7. Again, primarily concerning the issues of quota managed species. The public comment is going to be open through Sunday. So when you hear things tonight, you want to ponder it, you want to study the issues a little bit more, you're welcome to write us an email with your comments. We recommend you send the email to this marine.fish@mass.gov email address. The advantage to that is if you do, it'll definitely be collected and submitted to our Marine Fisheries Advisory Commission. Sometimes members of the public will send a message or an email to one of the staff, and we don't always get them over to that repository in time. So please send it to this designated mailbox in order that the commission will be guaranteed to receive your messages. Next slide, please. The rules of engagement, I'm guessing many of you have participated in these before. Tonight, we're here to hear your opinions and get comments on our proposals and how those might affect you. If we... Comments on anything outside of the proposals, we'll save till the end of the hearing. Folks want to talk about issues that aren't on the agenda, we'll do that at the end. We mute all members of the public during these presentations. At the conclusion of the presentation, and there'll be a few of them, we'll first take clarifying questions. And then, once we've addressed questions, we'll invite public comments. We disable the chat and question and answer functions. We do this because sometimes the cross debate can get pretty distracting among the members of the public. This way, all the comments, all the questions are presented right to the presenters, and I think that works best. We require you to raise your hand using the function in the Zoom software. And this creates a queue, and we will recognize you and ask you to speak in the order that you put up your hand. We'll give you up to three minutes, probably longer, given tonight that we have low participation. It is not necessary for you to comment tonight. You can just listen, you can ask qualifying or clarifying questions, and use this as a means to write a more informed letter later. In fact, I would recommend that. So we are going to go to... Let me see, next slide, Jared, we'll just go to the schedule. On slide number four, so you can see, there's your anticipated timeline. Tonight's the hearing. We have a public comment period that will close four days from now. We and staff will provide the recommendation to the commission on April 1st. On April 7th, the commission will vote at their regularly scheduled meeting on final rules. And then, we will file final regulations at the end of the month on April 29th. The four issues that we have up tonight, they are: commercial summer flounder, adjusting the quota allocation seasons, fishing days, and trip limits in order to fully utilize the available quota. And at least two of our species, we haven't been reaching the full quota, and those quotas are going up. So we want to amend the rules to enhance the chances of reaching the full quota. And that would be for not only summer flounder, but black sea bass as well. The commercial spiny dogfish trip limit is kind of a de facto issue for us. It's a rule that's been approved at the various council levels on the federal side, so that would just be a complimentary measure. And then finally, we've got some housekeeping rules. Staff have worked with environmental police and others or licensing staff, and we've found a handful of items that deserve clarification through some minor amendments, and we can talk about those at the end. So Jared Silver is going to present tonight. A lot of the information that he's going to present to you is data that has been analyzed by our excellent statistics team led by Anna Webb. And Nicola Mazzurro is also on the call, and she is my proxy at the Atlantic States Marine Fisheries Commission. And when that commission also works with the Mid-Atlantic Fisheries Management Council. And so she'll be able to speak up and help with any questions about the overall management process and the stock assessment. And Jared is our expert on sort of the state regulations. And he's going to present that which we are proposing tonight with some of this background. So Jared, take it away.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to start the presentation with summer flounder, and we're going to go over some background slides, then get into the meat of the proposals. At the conclusion, I'll take questions and public comment. Then we'll go to black sea bass to the same spiny dogfish and housekeeping. So most recent stock assessment for summer flounder was in 2021 with data current through 2019. It found the stock was not overfished. And official was not occurring, and there has been a northward and eastward trend in northward and eastward spatial shift in distribution over the past four decades. As a result of the stock assessment and changes to the Interstate Management Plan, Massachusetts is getting its summer flounder quota increased by 24% for 2022. This increases the state's quota about 1.4 million pounds. I did a 37% increase from 2021 for 2022. 24% of that increase is driven by the increase in the coastwide quota. The remainder is being driven by an increased quota share for Massachusetts under a new allocation approach to the fishery management plan. This is the second consecutive year with a substantial increase in the quota. In 2021, the quota increased from about 800,000 pounds to about just over 1 million pounds. It has steadily been increasing since an all-time low in 2017. On top of that, for the past three years, the quota's been underutilized. So we see in this slide, it's just kind of a visualization of the table. On the last slide, you can see the quota against landings. And for 2012 to 2021, and the projected quota for 2022. And as well, you'll see the dates that the fishery closed. You'll see that the fishery, over the past decade or so, has typically closed in late August to mid-September, with the exception of 2017, 2018, where the quota was rather low, and the fishery closed mid-July, mid-August. The past three years, 2019 to 2021, the quota has not been taken. Last year, we took just over 700,000 pounds of the quota, which is about half of what the quota will be this year. So with that in mind, we're looking to change the management system. The current management system allocates 30% of the annual quota to the period one fishery. The period one fishery occurs between January 1 and April 22nd. It accommodates the harvest of fish coming in from offshore. The trip limit starts at 1,000 pounds, but may be adjusted upwards by in-season adjustment. This year, we adjusted the quota upwards to 2,500 pounds for that period one fishery. Once, if 25% of the overall quota is taken, then the trip limit is reduced to 100 pounds. Additionally, during this period one fishery, we have a pilot program that allows the multi-state possession of summer flounder when offloading in Massachusetts. I'll get a bit more into that program in the next slide. Period two fishery occurs between April 23rd and once the quota is taken or the end of the calendar year. For this period, it's subdivided into three seasons. You have the April 23rd through June 9th season, which matches the small mesh trawl squid season. Landings are allowed seven days a week. It's 100 pounds for nets, and there is no hook fishery at that time. The directed inshore fishery opens on June 10th. It remains open until October 31st. Current fishing days are Sundays through Thursdays. Trip limit is 400 pounds for nets, 200 pounds for hooks. Then the fishery shifts offshore, or the manager of the fishery switches to focus on the offshore fishery on November 1, open seven days a week, and 1,000 pounds for all gear. The trip limit is set at 500 pounds of less than 5% of the quota remains. So we made minor adjustments to these limits in 2019, 2020, which I'll discuss on the next slide. But these changes were not commensurate with the substantial quota increases incurred in those two years. So how do we change management in the past two years? For period one, we increased the trip limit to 500, from 500 pounds to 1,000 pounds. And we use the in-season adjustment or declaration process to further increase the trip limits in 2020 and 2021, as well as this current year. The limits increased to 2,000 pounds on February 23rd in 2020, to 2,000 pounds on January 1 in 2021, and to 2,500 pounds on January 1, 2022. Additionally, we piloted a cooperative program with the states of New York, Connecticut, and Rhode Island. This program allows federally permitted vessels with local landing permits in multiple states to take advantage of the lack of federal trip limit and land the possession limits to possess the aggregate limits of each state in which they are permitted, and then commit to port of possession of non-conforming limits to offload each state's landing limit. So if you're in possession of Rhode Island and Massachusetts permit, you can come into Massachusetts with the combined limits for Massachusetts and Rhode Island, offload the fish from Massachusetts, and then steam over to Rhode Island, offload those limits. We believe that a program has been successful in helping the period one fishery better achieve its quota and operate more efficiently. And we have not run into many enforcement or compliance issues as a result of it. For period two, we adjusted the trip limits back in 2020. We increased the directed fishery trip limits to 300 to 400 pounds for nets and 200, 250 pounds for hooks. And then we added that offshore November to December one season with 1,000 pound trip limit and no closed fishing days. We also use the declaration or in-season adjustment process to increase trip limits and adjust fishing days in the 2019 to 2021 period. For 2019, effective November 1, we eliminated closed fishing days, increased the hook limit to 300 pounds. For 2020, effective August 23, we increased the trip limit to 400 pounds and 600 pounds for nets. Then again, on October 4th, we increased the trip to 1,000 pounds for all gear and eliminated closed fishing days. Then November 1, we increased the trip over to 2,000 pounds for all gears. For 2021, on September 26, we increased the trip limit to 800 pounds for all gears and eliminated closed fishing days. And effective October 10, increased the trip limit to 2,000 pounds for all gear. We also adopted a pilot program for this period, which allowed vessels fishing on multiple days or consecutive days to retain trip limits for day one in a sealed container, not have to land, and then land on the second day. This accommodated some of the trawlers who were fishing further to the east by not requiring them to come back to port every night to offload. Instead, they could lay up inside of Lee and Nantucket or in Nantucket Harbor, and then go back out to the fishing grounds on day two and land consecutive daily limits on that second day. A lot of what we're proposing tonight builds on kind of the in-season adjustment and pilot programs that we've operated the last couple of years. So I'm going to move on to the proposals now. So for period one, our recommendation is to increase the allocation from 30% up to 50% to increase the trip limit for this period to at least 2,500 pounds, which is consistent with what we've implemented via in-season adjustment for 2022, to maintain a trip limit reduction trigger based on the new quota allocation. For instance, if we increase that quota allocation to 50%, once 45% of it is landed, to reduce the trip limit to 500 pounds, that prevents the period one fishery from running an overage that would reduce the amount of quota available to the period two fishery and to codify that multi-state pilot program I discussed as a regulation. The rationale for this is largely that the period one fishery has demonstrated an ability to take a large amount of the seasonal allocation. It provided the proper regulatory flexibility and efficiency that we believe higher trip limits in the pilot program achieve. And that's bore out in the 2020, but even more so the 2021 data. As you can see, that black line really shows that this fishery in 2021 got pretty close to its 30% allocation. Now, before I get to the proposals for period two, I just want to run by a little bit of information regarding this fishery to kind of color what we're seeing here, provide a little bit more explanation as to why we're providing our proposals. As you have seen, period, the directed fishery, the June through October fishery, landings have decreased sizably over the past decade. That's largely drawn by changes of participation that I'll get to in the next slide. The last time the fishery landed more than 700,000 pounds, which is its anticipated allocation at a 50/50 quota allocation split at the 2020 quota, 2022 quota of 1.4 million pounds was 2011. 2020, the fishery landed less than 400,000 pounds, and we're seeing an increasing proportion of catch coming from federal waters in recent years. So what this shows is participation by gear in the inshore-directed June to October fishery. You'll see that the number of trips, particularly by rod and reel fishermen, as well as activity, particularly by rod and reel fishermen, has decreased over the past several years. And that decrease in participation by both rod and reel fishermen and trawl fishermen is what we believe is driving this decrease in landings in this fishery. One of the important trends we're seeing is that there's not an abundance of... Well, our trawl survey has seen that there is an abundance of medium-grade fish in state waters. Our trawl survey occurs in May, but then we're seeing a dip in large and jumbo grade fish in state waters, particularly from a time series high in the early 2000s. And we anticipate or expect that this is similar to what the fishery is experiencing. We're also seeing similar trends in our fall, September survey. And that corresponds to a lot of what I've been hearing from commercial fishermen and recreational fishermen, that there isn't a lot of large-sized fish in the inshore state waters of Nantucket South and your South and Buzzards Bay that perhaps drove the fishery 15, 20 years ago. Another trend we're seeing in summer flounder landings is for the trawl fishery, we frequently see that even though there's reduced participation in this fishery, the active participants generally land about the trip limit, which falls into that 200 to 300 category, except for 2020 where the trip limit was increased. You'll see that there was a large amount of landings in that 300-plus category. This rod and reel fishery is slightly different. Most of the landings occur at that 100, up to 100 pounds, and then at the 101 to 200 pounds. So fewer hook trips take up to that limit. So to get into the proposals from there, so those past few slides kind of inform what we're seeing in this fishery. And based on that, we're putting forth some of these proposals. So we're moving to decrease the period two quota allocation by 70% to 50%, largely because that allocation has not been achieved in recent years. It will likely not be achieved in 2022, given the magnitude of the quota incurred participation levels. We're discussing moving the start date of the directed fishery from June 10 to April 23rd. This will provide trawlers with an alternative to squid fishing, should the squid run and be late or poor, and gives hook-and-line fishermen a springtime fishery, which many have sought since the sea bass quota was moved to the summer and the Teta quota was moved to the fall. Additionally, we're moving to eliminate the closed fishing days. This will allow both the trawl fleet and hook-and-line fleet to take advantage of good weather fishing days, particularly as a lot of fishing has been reportedly occurring further to the east, requiring further steams to get to the fishing grounds. With that in mind, it could potentially enhance fishermen's safety. It may help compensate for a reduction in activity and participation by having more trips occur. Continuing on, we're looking to increase the trawl trip limits from 400 to at least 500 pounds of the hook trip limits for 250 to 300 pounds. When the trawl fishery is overlapping with squid fishery, the trip limit would remain 100 pounds if in possession of squid or fishing with small mesh. We'd like to build in some date certain increases to trip limits or changes to closed fishing days. Should quota remain available, for instance, on September 1, increase to 600 pounds for all gear. Should more than 25% of the quota remain, or if we don't go to a seven-day-a-week fishery right on April 23rd, add a fishing day or two, you know, September 1, August 1, based on quota utilization. Then move the start of that fall fishery to October 1 from November 1, and have that trip limit be at least 1,000 pounds if 15% or more of the quota, or at least 1,000 pounds of 15% or less of the quota remains or greater than 2,500 pounds if 15% or more of the quota remains. Some of the reasons for this is, you know, allow trawlers to better access their trip limits. Hook-and-line fishermen, particularly the highliners, will be able to have access to available quota by increasing the trip limits. It avoids having to do in-season adjustments if we're to build in date starting approaches to increasing the trip limits or adjust to the open fishing days, should we not go to seven days a week. And the fall fishery would allow greater utilization of whatever quota remains for the fall fishery by opening it earlier, and that would occur after the expected close of the recreational fishery, which would be September 30th this current year. So this is the proposal in summary, in kind of a table description. So I will move to take questions and comments now. A few rules on the questions and comments. Use the raise hand function. That creates a queue. It allows me to call on you as, based on that queue. Typically, we take questions then comments, but given the size of the audience tonight, we can just go forward. And you know, if you have a question or a comment, step right up. Use that raise hand function, and I will call on you. Brett Hoffmeister.
How are you, Jared?
I'm doing well, Brett. How are you?
Great, thanks. Hey, just two quick ones. One regarding the, I think it was a medium-sized fluke showing up in the trawl surveys. Looked good. Would that be indicative of recruitment? You know, good recruitment in that fishery from young fish, or is that just a just an odd dataset? It's odd that the other one seemed down. Secondly, with the directed fishery starting in April, I guess there's, you know, a little bit concerned on our part, obviously, because of bycatch or horse-drood crabs, and I wondered what sort of consideration was given to the lunar closures and stuff like that. I'm assuming at this point that they would remain intact, but I wanted some confirmation.
So to answer your second question first, the lunar closures apply to all commercial horseshoe crab harvest weather and harvest on the spawning beaches or trawl harvest in the south, and that would remain in place for this year. Nick, do you want to address the first question about recruitment?
Sure. You don't have to go back to it, but on slide five, that's an interesting point that you picked out, Brett, because recruitment into the into the stock has actually been below average from 2011 to 2017. So that increase in mediums is interesting. I'm not sure I can explain it based on recruitment.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks, Brett. Brian Curry, how you doing tonight? Brian, you have to unmute yourself. A little microphone button.
How about now?
Loud and clear, Brian.
Good afternoon, evening. Regarding the number of hook-and-line licenses, do you have a number between those that are active and versus the total, like you have for striped bass? This is number one. Number two, if you're trying to utilize the quota for the hook-and-line, is there any thought given to a possible getting a lot, it's a closed fishery, so for licensing, try people who are active fishermen and other like black sea bass or bluefish or striped bass, allowing them a one-year provisional to see if we can get the quota?
So to answer both of your questions, Brian, I do not believe in story or anti-interject if I'm wrong here, that we have the number of active rod and reel fishermen parsed out. We do have some information on the number of total fluke endorsement permit holders, and there's a substantial amount of latent effort in this fishery. So there is a lot of inactivity. And to address some of that inactivity and to encourage participation, we did establish a policy last year that allows for the transfer of fluke endorsements from an active permit holder. Active being anyone that sold, I believe, more than a pound of fish in four out of the past five years. So these permits are now transferable, which was not the case until last year. But we haven't moved to making this an open-entry fishery yet. It still remains limited entry, but with transferability for rod and reel permits.
And is that one pound a year?
That is the active threshold, yeah.
All right. So one triple limit, Jared, one triple limit.
One triple limit, I'm sorry.
So that's a little bit more than one pound.
So that would be 250 pounds for hook-and-line gear.
And Brian, we can follow up if we don't have... I'm pulling something up here. We might not have that active number right here, but if we can get it, I'll send it to you.
I know an example of a couple of people out in the vineyard that they missed the date to get the renewal of the license. They'd had it for like 20 years, and they used to fish it, but they missed it. And they're out to lunch right now, but what you're saying is, if you can find, is that a transfer within family, or is it?
Anyone. So if the permit's active, anyone that is a commercial rod and reel fisherman with the requisite experience, which I believe is one-year part-time, one-year full-time or the equivalent part-time in a rod and reel, in any commercial fishery would be allowed to get that permit through transfer.
Yeah, that, I know, I, for one, would be interested. If I'm out trying to get black sea bass and I happen to get a fluke, I gotta let it go. Now that, I I know I, I for one would be interested if I'm out trying to get black sea bass and I happen to get a float, I gotta let it go.
Yeah, and and from the 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 limits we're looking at, where we looked at uh kind of the frequency of catch, I think that this has become more of an incidental catch rod and reel fishery than in the past where you might have run into a fleet of boats on middle, middle ground out in the sound there, um, you know, on a weekday.
Yeah, well, the one particular gentleman, I used to go out and I just fish with him. But he would catch it in vineyard sound and he was catching some good fish, but he hasn't done it in four or five years now. But uh, all right, I I can pursue that, I can pursue that without uh taking up any more of your time, but thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Ja- Jared, it looks like about seventy active rod and reel um harvesters in recent years.
Okay.
Give or take.
All right, Dan, I'm not seeing any further hands raised. So uh, we're going to proceed to black, black sea bass.
Sounds good, Jared. Keep going.
All right. All right, so the story with black sea bass is not too dissimilar from the uh story with summer flounder, although uh it's it's less about uh decreased participation and more about increasing quotas. So the uh quota is being set at almost a million pounds, nine hundred and almost nine hundred and nine thousand pounds for twenty twenty two. This is a twenty six percent increase from the seven hundred and ninety one thousand pound quota in uh twenty twenty one. Six percent of the increase is due to increase the close coast wide quota share. Our this increase is being driven by an increase in the coastline quota and an increase in Massachusetts overall quota share. So the coastline quote is increasing by six percent and our share of that quota is increasing from thirteen percent to fifteen point four percent under a new regional biomass quoted allocation approach uh that the nickel reserve has worked on for the past couple of years. Um, so from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty two, you've seen this quota steadily increasing from around a half million pounds to now up to almost a million pounds. And last year with the quota at almost eight hundred thousand pounds, uh, we it was slightly underutilized by about eight percent. So with an additional two hundred thousand pounds coming our way, we want to tweak um the way this fishery has managed to make sure that fish is taken. So this this visualization of what that table showed, you know, fishery typically closes in the fall. Um, as that quota is increased, it's closed later in the fall. Did not close last year, and now we're looking at even more quota and trying to figure out how to how to get that fish caught and into the seafood dealers. Um, so that is a five year trend um of how the annual landings have been similar visualization to the last slide. So how's this fishery managed? Well, we have a winter time fishery that occurs between January one and March thirty one. It's open all gears, no close fishing day is a hundred pound limit. It's effectively a bycatch fishery for the offshore troll fishery. Um, we have a weir set aside, the weir set aside is kept annually at twenty four thousand pounds. There's no season or trip limit um for that fishery, given how it functions, when there's no closed fishing days either. So given how that functions, the wears are usually set in the spring, take it down by the summer uh based upon their avail, their inshore availability. Uh, we have a uh allowance for the springtime squid troll fishery. It's a small mesh troll fishery. Uh, the trip limit is a hundred pounds. As there's no closed fishing days in the squid fishery, there's no closed fishing days for the retention of sea bass in that troll fishery. Hundred pound limit is commensurate with what is allowed under the interstate and federal plan for small mass fishing. Uh, when the directed fishery starts on June ten or the direct control fishery starts on June ten, um, landing days become Sunday to Thursday commensurate with what's allowed in that uh fluke fishery. And the limit stays at a hundred pounds. Uh, they're typically not taken in large quantities with that larger mesh uh with a six and a half inch mesh. So most of the fish in the states taken by the directed fish pot and the directed hook and line fishery. Currently, the these directed fisheries open on July eighth and remain open till the end of the year unless the quota is taken sooner. Uh, the open fishing days are Sunday, Tuesday, Thursdays. It's a four hundred pound trip limit for the potters and a two hundred pound trip limit for the hook and liners. Uh, we've made some recent changes to um how this fishery is managed. Uh, uh, got to going back in time in twenty thirteen. We eliminated the spring fishery to address derby fishing conditions, high knock compliance, low ex vessel value and spawning concerns and move the entire quota to the summer. Uh, twenty seventeen, we moved the start date of the season from the first Tuesday in August to July eighteenth. We made some in season adjustments that year to increase trip limits later in the season to accommodate additional landing quota. In twenty eighteen, we traded Wednesdays for Thursdays as open fishing days to space the fishery out over the week and to eliminate conflicts with the striped bass fishing days. Uh, as I believe those Wednesdays were doubled up and there were only two days for the striped bass fishery at that time. Um, in twenty twenty, we increased the regulatorally set trip limits for potters to four hundred pounds or three hundred pounds of hook and liners from two hundred pounds from a hundred and fifty. Later in the year, we had in season adjustments to increase the pot limits to five hundred pounds and the hook limits to two hundred and fifty pounds and went to a five day a week, Sunday through Thursday fishery. Um, uh, in twenty twenty one, we made some in season adjustments as well. Uh, that increased the uh hook limit to five hundred pound, I mean, the trap limit to five hundred pounds of the hook limit to two hundred and fifty pounds at a five day week, Sunday to Thursday fishery effective August thirtieth. And then we eliminated those fishing days in October one. Had we probably eliminated those closed fishing days earlier than October one, we likely would have uh maybe taken that remaining eight percent of the quota. Uh, for the troll fishery in twenty eighteen, we established a hundred pound trip limit for the spring and summer fishery and cap spring trial landings at fifty thousand pounds. And we matched the open fishing days to the squid and summer flounder troll fishing days so that they could, any days of they might be fishing for summer flounder or squid, they could retain and land black sea bass. Uh, twenty thirteen, we established the weir set aside at ten thousand pounds. Then we increased it to twenty four thousand pounds in twenty seventeen commensurate with the uh quota increase at that time. Uh, so the focus, most of the fish being taken in this fishery is being taken by hook and liners and trap fishermen. We we focused our proposals on that. So just to give you some basic information on how on how these fisheries performed in twenty twenty. Um, now there were fifty four active harvesters that year. It took a total number of a one thousand one hundred and sixty three trips. This is for the trap fishery and nearly all trap fishermen fish at that four hundred pound limit at the high end of their, at their trip limit. Uh, very few uh trips occur where fish has landed below that trip limit. A hook and line fishery is a little bit more different, a little bit different. Um, you know, twenty twenty, there were two hundred and fifty three active harvesters. They took a twenty twenty one hundred trips uh and the distribution of trips at at poundage is a bit different. It's a much more evenly spaced out, uh, but there are a number of trips being taken uh where, you know, fishermen are taking at or at that trip limit. So that would be your one fifty one to one ninety nine for the two hundred category. And that would include, the two hundred category would include um those trips taken once we increase the trip limit um during in season adjustment. So what are we looking to do this year? We're looking to move the season forward one week to July one, uh, provide additional week of access and product to the market for the Fourth of July holiday. And it maintains the fishery at that post spawning period with most of that prime spring spawning ending by the end, by the last week of June. Uh, we're looking to add fishing days, adding both Monday and Wednesday to start the season. Um, and this would allow fishing Sunday through Thursday and then to eliminate closed fishing days on October one. Uh, this would provide better access to to the quota so it could be utilized, provide more flexibility for weather and enhance small boat safety. Um, and then during the the bulk of the summer season, we maintain a weekend closure to minimize potential conflict with with the recreational fishery. Um, trip limits, we're looking to increase the trip limits by gear tight by twenty five percent for the two directed fisheries. So this would increase the uh trap fishing limit from four hundred to five hundred pounds and the hook fishing limit from two hundred, two hundred and fifty pounds. Uh, then if ten percent or more of the quarter remains in October one, we'd increase it again to six hundred pounds for pots or three hundred pounds for non trap. Or consider other date certain increases based on quota availability. Maybe that's off September, rather, maybe that's on October one, maybe it's September one, maybe it's a higher trip limit. Um, you know, that, those are the types of things we're looking to take comment on. And that just basically increases the daily landing potential for better quota utilization. Uh, and then the trial or bycatch limits, if the, if the summer flounder limits are adjusted and the upper seasons are adjusted, we would adjust the black sea bass rules accordingly to allow for the retention of black sea bass bycatch on days when those trawlers are allowed to fish for summer flounder. That reduces regulatory discarding. Um, and through that will enhance quota utilization. We're not going to increase that hundred pound limit. Um, it's the maximum allowed during the squid fishery. And when fishing with large mesh, the the mesh that's allowed in the fluke fishery, there's not a large amount of black sea bass bycatch, given the uh the mesh size and where those trawlers are fishing. Um, so this is the table that's similar to the fluid that kind of shows these adjustments and and what we'd be looking to implement for twenty twenty two. So uh, again, same process as before, questions, comments, raise your hand, uh, create a queue and I'll call on you as like, as it comes up. All right, I'm not seeing any comments, so I'm going to go on to spiny dogfish. All right, again, oh, hold on, we've got a you got a late arrival. Brian Curry, you're gonna be with yourself.
I got you. Uh, since most of the fish, I did, I fished with another gentleman, but I fished with myself too. But we lost a lot of days last year, even with the more days fishing because of all those storms that went south of Massachusetts. We didn't get any, uh, sometimes we didn't get much wind or anything, but the water was as big seas and dirty and really not fishable with all the stuff in the water. And since we're trying to, again, reach the quota, I'm wondering, uh, you know, my recommendation would be to give the hook and liners as many days as you can. Because even with four or five days of fishing, once you get into uh September, October, November, most of the recreational, they're done, plus their boats are out of the water by Labor Day now.
So you're looking for seven days a week, maybe as early as September one?
That's what I would be saying.
Okay.
Because it's, it was just, if you remember that weather, we had a ton of storms that went south of us.
Yeah.
But the waves were six to eight feet some days out there and some days ten when you're out near No Man's. And uh, the water was dirty or it was just too rough for a lot of the small boats.
Okay, I appreciate the comment, Brian. Uh, in in your experience, hook and line fishing is three hundred pounds of a good limit?
It's tough to get unless you really, uh, I don't keep small ones. I mean, most of the people that sell their fish, fish out of Minnepsha and sell through Minnepsha, they're not going to keep anything that isn't a couple of pounds, it just doesn't pay.
Yeah.
You're better off discarding it, uh, they're tough fish. And just keep the ones that are, you're looking for medium to jumbos.
Yeah, all right, I appreciate the comments.
Yep.
All right, well, I'm going to move on to spiny dogfish then. And similar situation, there's a a fair amount of underutilized quota. Um, as you can see by the graph at the bottom, um, you know, the coast wide quota, the coast wide quota and federal trip limits are annual except by Noah fisheries based on New England Council recommendation. Uh, the trip limits increased from four thousand, five thousand pounds in twenty fourteen to six thousand pounds in twenty sixteen. Um, the interstate plan determines state shares and the ASFCC annually sets the state trip limits for Maine to Connecticut. That's usually done consistent with what the federal trip limits are. Um, so, yeah, as you'll see, for this past year, the Maine to Connecticut quota share was fifty eight percent with a six thousand pound trip limit. Um, Maine adopted a slightly lower trip limit at five thousand pounds. You can, states can work within that triple, but we can adopt more than what the um state and federal go, the ASRC and the council approved. So for twenty twenty two, uh, fishing here that begins on May one, um, the councils recommended increasing the trip limit to seventy five hundred pounds. And the uh ASRC is following suit with that to allow the, that to occur in the uh northern region. Um, you know, you'll see down here that the distributor of landings, most, most of the vessels fishing for dogfish are landing up to that six thousand pound limit, uh, that's sixty two percent of the landings are coming from the five thousand to six thousand pound threshold. So an increase in by fifteen hundred pounds. Um, the fishery should be able to utilize some of that additional fish on a per trip basis. So we're looking for comments on following, following the council and the ASFCC or Noah Fisheries in the ASFCC to increase that uh trip limit for this year from six thousand pounds to seventy five hundred pounds to better utilize the available quota. Any comments or questions? Not seeing any comments and questions. So I'm going to move on to four housekeeping proposals. As Dan said at the start of this meeting, um, you know, these come up as the, as DMF works with the environmental police and and among us, among the policy and permitting staff on kind of the end of the year basis to things that came up that year that we might want to tweak as we um as we move forward, just because of some amount of confusion that it might have caused. So the first thing came up out of our marine fisheries advisory commission's law enforcement subcommittee and uh the environmental police were seeking clarification if the owner operator rule applies to fishing, applies to just the fishing activity or extends through the sale of fish caught. Um, so in all of our trap fisheries, we have an owner operator requirement. On that me, by regulation, that means the named individual listed on the permit must be on board the vessel when commercial fishing is being conducted under the authority of that permit. Um, what we're looking for is feedback as to whether they also need to be at present up through the time of primary purchase, i.e. that sale to a, to a dealer. Second housekeeping measure we're looking at is dealing with uh officer discretion and liability on for hire vessels. Um, several years back, the commission passed a regulation that was designed to explicitly state that the environmental police um may enforce recreational bag limits, not only on the individual patron, but as well as the for hire permit holder or for hire vessel operating. And then each may, each or singularly, they may be liable for violations of the size limit, possession limit or daily bag limits. Uh, we added some language in that rule that that said the law enforcement officers may use their discretion or whether to cite uh the permit holder or the vessel operator for violations where best industry practice were used. That is the announcing of rules to patrons and the posting of rules um on the vessel. Uh, officer discretion is a, is a technique that exists outside of our regulations. It's it's what they're trained to do. We're not suggesting here that we eliminate the idea of officer discretion. We're just moving to eliminate that language in the regulation because it's redundant to their existing authority. Um, and in my experience on the enforcement and compliance side of things, dealing with adjudicatory hearings, it creates some confusion. dealing with adjudicatory hearings, it creates some confusion about why we're requiring officer discretion or why we're delving in in our regulations and officer discretion in this instance where we don't do it elsewhere. And it begs the question if, you know, what is being additionally required or why that discretion should be used? It would be much cleaner to get rid of it. Again, we want to be getting rid of officer discretion, the idea of it or its utilization in the field. We would just be getting rid of the reference in this regulation to it. You know, that was kind of developed out of some conversations with the four hire fleet, particularly the headboat boat fleet where they have, they have 50, 60, 100 people on their vessel and they didn't want to be, you know, held liable if one or two people were non-compliant on their vessel and they had done the outreach and done the posting as they're required. So, so that was kind of to assuage some of their concerns. In the years that this has been implemented, we think the, you know, there has been ample use of good discretion and, and getting rid of it wouldn't affect that. So we just want to clean that up. The next one is to implement more precise limit, language regarding the limited entry permit endorsement renewal deadline. At present, it reads that limited entry regulated permit endorsements that are not postmarked to receive by DMF prior to 12:00 AM on the last day of February may be approved. We want that to read may not be approved. Functionally, it means the same thing, but it makes a whole lot more sense when it reads may not be approved. So we want to clarify that. The last housekeeping measure is dealing with recreational lobster and edible crab traps. The last year, we prohibited blue crab trapping. Now the only edible crabs that can be trapped are cancer crabs, the Jonah rock crabs. These crabs are not frequently caught in inshore waters where recreational trap fishing occurs. And our intention is not to limit the catching of these crabs by trap, but just to make sure that whatever trap gear that is being deployed is, is lobster gear and there's not a proliferation of a new gear fishing waters where these crabs aren't normally caught to catch these crabs. I may also catch lobster or other species. It's just much easier to enforce if the traps being used where these crabs may be retained are lobster traps. So that's what we're proposing to do. So I will take any comments on these four housekeeping proposals. All right. No comment. So hold on. Brett Hofmeister.
Hello again, Jared. So regarding trapping of the blue crabs, is that inclusive of things like star traps and whatnot or just like a box trap?
Collapsible traps are, are allowed. It's just your six-sided, three-dimensional trap. Anything that you put on the ocean of a hole on a string, stir trap, collapsible trap. There's some open top traps that we've been made aware of over the past year or two and all of that stuff's allowed. It's the passively fished six-sided traps that are prohibited.
All right. Thanks for the clarification.
No problem. All right, Dan. That's looking like it's it for tonight. So I'll turn it over for you to bring it home.
Sure. All right. Well, thank you, those of you who hung in there. And of course, this is a recorded hearing, so it is quite possible and likely that there are going to be some folks watching this in the, in a recorded mode. And so it is still educational. So Jared, nice job tonight. If you were a comedian, it would be a terrible night with all this quiet audience, but you, you definitely did a nice job explaining a lot of detailed proposals and with a lot of background. So thanks for your efforts. So again, this document, I'm sorry, this, this public comment period is going to go through Sunday, March 20th. We have staff available over the next couple of days. If you want to email us, if you want to ask any clarifying questions, you can do that, but please submit comments to the marine.fish@mass.gov mailbox. So I guess that'll be it for tonight. Are there any other issues that any of the members of the public would like to discuss with us? We have a few extra minutes here because we're finishing early. Let us know, raise your hand. Otherwise, Jared, we'll, we'll close the hearing. Actually, we can close the hearing anyway. And then, and then we'll take any side questions or side issues if folks want us to stick around.